To order. And the first item on the agenda will be to review the public works salary review.
Mayor, more members of the commission, we were going to have Tanya, she was in a an accident, she doesn't have a car, so we, her, her car is totaled, so I hope she's doing well, but try to get her on the phone for connection issues. We talked at the last meeting about the pay scale, the 2% cost of living, plus the step increase, reducing a column off the beginning, adding a column on the end, we said that we would talk more about public works and specifics here, Tanya did her review, I think her memo speaks for herself, and really, what we try to do is, we try to look at the, as of late, we've tried to look at the regional economy, you know, like any DC, MDU, Otter Tail, those sorts of things, because that's who we're really kind of competing for employees with, not necessarily other political subdivisions like Valley City, Wapton, for some of our public work staffing, and so, doing the best that we can, some of that data information is hard to come by, but in the end, we really think that if we reduce a column on the end and add a column, or reduce a column at the beginning, add a column at the end, then that's going to address any issues that we have in, in public works as far as hiring lower, or longevity over time. Mike really, you know, Mike's a numbers guy, so him and Tanya were going deep into the weeds, and I feel like we've reached and aligned consensus that that's the strategy that we would like to propose to the commission, I'll give Mike an opportunity, America, please you to maybe reflect on his conversation with Tanya, since Tanya's not here, but really, with the public works department, I think if we do those two things, plus, as we suggested earlier, giving the public works, the supervisors here, the authority to hire up to an F, that that's going to give them the tools they need to run their departments effectively, so. Mike, I'll turn it over to you, if you have anything further to add.
The memo written by Tanya kind of lays out everything, you know, one of the ideas was to try and review, you know, the local market and what we're competing against, because we have lost, we recently lost a very good employee to a local utility, and so, when, when she started looking at that, it really, the local utilities are paying very well in comparison to what the city is paying for utility department workers, and so, it kind of disrupted the entire apple cart and entire city pay system, if you start equating city utility workers to MDU, to NDTC, to Otter Tail, and so, it, I mean, she looked at, gathered some data, it was a little harder for her to get the data, then all of a sudden, she looked at the other cities that would typically compare herself to, Wapton, Valley City, Jamestown, and Crookston, I wasn't real comfortable with that, so we looked at the city of Grand Forks, city of Grand Forks just did a very extensive pay scale review, of course, our, our workers don't coincide perfect with what, what you're seeing in Grand Forks as far as a true apples-to-apples comparison, because somebody there might only work in the water treatment plant, here, you're working in the water treatment plant, you might be harvesting lemn, you might be working in sewer collection, you're doing everything, but at the end of the day, it seemed like what Spencer had mentioned, to get us where we need to go, if we drop a column on one side, add a column on another side, and do entire pay scale adjustments, it seems like the best approach for us.
I do, I don't, I talked with the team before we came and presented, you know, the city of Devils Lake, I think it's focused over the last 15 years on kind of three things, public safety services, being on the forefront of cost of living adjustments for city employees, as well as making sure public works has the equipment they need to do their jobs well and effectively, if you'll see, most, mostly, they try to be between that 95 and 100% of the market, right, and if you look overall percent of market, most of them, there's a lot of them that are slightly over 100%, so when you talk about public works employees, yes, we have challenges recruiting when it compared to the private sector around us, but if you look, you know, at, at other communities, as far as those public works position, we feel good as far as, you know, where that lands on that 100%, and when those ones that are, you know, in the 90s, I wish you really feel that that dropping that column at the beginning, adding that at the end is going to address that, that piece, so. Would welcome any questions from the commission. And I know, and I want to speak to Tanya, but she'll make herself available for any questions that you guys may have after the fact, after our discussion.
So with the, the ability to hire at that level F, is that correct?
Yeah.
And we have, like, we've talked about that compression issue, right? So would we be able to, as supervisors, you guys, that's you guys, able to move people currently that are employed with us, upgrade when we drop this, and when we drop an add, because of that, would we be able to, with good reason, to be able to move somebody within that?
You're saying promote somebody within?
No, what I'm saying is that, let's say if I'm currently at a, a C, right?
Okay.
And we drop the one column, add a column, can we, as supervisors, with good reason, because a good employee, and we need to move him up a little bit, because we don't want to have, hire somebody at that same wage, can we currently, right now, move that person up to an F, or whatever we want to move him to, not pass an F without permission, but can we do that?
We standardly, we standardly haven't, if we do those sorts of things, we usually bring it to the city commission for your approval, and bringing it to the city commission for approval, it brings it to that threshold where we feel like the facts are really on our side, that we feel comfortable bringing it to you, and so, if it is really that justified, and we have done, well, initial hires, we have brought to the commission, we have brought promotions from within to the city commission for you guys' consideration, so really, I mean, if you want the public work supervisors to have the authority to do that kind of thing, you can give us that, and we'll do the best we can, but usually, we bring it to the commission to stay in good faith and good working relationship with the city commission portfolio holders and whatnot, and it also makes sure that we have our facts set really well, and we have a good case to make, because if we don't have a good case to make, I'm not bringing it, so, that, that would be my response.
Well, I, I know in my past position, I mean, we did that, we did have to come to the commission to get that approval, but I'm saying with this one-time deal, you know, that we're doing this initial compression, I mean, I, I, I feel comfortable with the fact that if our current supervisors feel comfortable enough to make that decision at one time with the current employees that currently have, to move them up, you know, the one step, at least, you know, because then we could reduce that compression a little bit, say, listen, we're going to move you in that regard, so that when we do hire somebody at a higher level, we don't feel like we're going to have that problem, but that's up to you guys.
So, I'd say every other year, we usually bring forward the policy manual for you guys' consideration, which would, you know, with those slight amendments, which hiring up to that F is going to probably be a requested change in that policy manual, and as far as this discussion goes, I think if anything, we would just make sure that, obviously, we're talking about public works right now, but then, all the supervisors would have that latitude, not just public works.
Correct.
And so, if that's something that the commission wants to give us, to give us the city admin and supervisors, leaders, the authority, we will definitely do it in a way that would reflect well upon the city of Devils Lake, but at the end of the day, you need to make the judgment whether or not you want that to come to the commission or not, and if you don't, we make things quicker and efficient on our.
It's not like it happens a lot.
Well, correct, and I, like I'm saying, this isn't like something, in my opinion, that you do, like, for the next couple of years, you know what I mean, every budget cycle, if we keep dropping a column, it so be it, but this one-time deal, where, you know, when we're going to drop one, add one, you know, now you're starting to develop that small compression at the beginning, it, it's up to that F level, not, not anything past that, it's up to that F, and then they can make that decision based on whomever's currently in that area, to be able to say, okay, well, this guy, he's really good employee, I don't want to get him to complain, I don't need him to come and answer, whatever, I want to move him that one step, and it shows good faith to that employee, too, that, you know, we feel comfortable enough to say that, you know, you're a good employee, and we don't want to lose you, and I don't think they necessarily have to come to us, anything past that F, I think they would.
Well, would something like that do to the budget?
Yeah, that's all the considerations you make a move mid, mid, mid-year like that, that's going to have an effect, but, you know, we also have those effects on you lose an employee, and you're going to hire a new one, you got to pay them out their vacation and their sick leave, and then you got to hire a new employee, and so, you do the best you can at the beginning of the year, but then something's just all what they are as they happen throughout the year.
In the past, when we addressed the compression issue, I just brought a memo forward to the commissions, for the commissions' consideration, specifically dealt with the street department, public ways, and the question approved it, because it was multiple employees that were impacted with that particular one, right now, the last few hires within the departments have, we've already hired at the E level, maximum level, because you're not getting anybody at a B or a C level, the pay is just too low, so I don't think it's going to be much of an issue in public works, right now, according to our policy manual, there isn't a provision for more than one step increase, so it'd have to be either commission approval, or individual departments write a memo and bring it to the commission for consideration.
So you really don't have any employees in that category?
I don't think we will, and not in public works, I can't speak for all the departments, but because we've been, the last few hires have been hired at that E level, because you just, if you do get interest, they're not interested at a, coming in at step B.
So if you want, if you guys want to explore giving us a little more leniency as supervisors, we will use it in a way that will reflect positively upon the city of Devils Lake, and if you want it to continue business as normal, we will do that as well as we're used to, so whatever you guys would like to see.
My concern is if we do it, I mean, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but if we do it citywide, that could get out of control real quick.
That was my concern, like, I liked everything just to be transparent and, you know, not start to create.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I get it, I have no issue with it, you know, the initial compression that takes place, that's the only thing I was considering, but, yeah, I have no problem leaving it the way it is.
Some of it is probably the job performance.
I, I feel it should be left the way it is.
So, I think, right, well, probably, the next couple of months, we'll work with Tanya, updating the employee policy manual, and maybe that would be a good time for a final determination on the subject, would that be appropriate?
Keep it open, but, yeah.
Effective, you know, effective January 1, 2016, so we have a little.
What it, what it, it would be nice to do, I'm following, I'm, I'm a little hard of hearing, just like, I think I'm following you, like, okay, let's say somebody has really good qualifications when you're interviewing them, okay, rightfully hire them at an F, let's say I don't know exactly what he's capable of doing, coming off some other trade, so I would say, yeah, I'll start you at a 7D, and see what capabilities he has, but then, the way it goes now, you have to wait a year to get a step increase, it'd be nice to say, oh, he's, he's caught on, he knows way more than I thought he'd get, and maybe go up to an E after four months, then after, you know, go up to that F within a year, instead of just right off the bat saying, it'd be nice to have.
We have a rotational six-month review, and supervisors have latitude to, to conduct that sooner or later, if they really want to, so.
I think that's what you were kind of saying.
Yeah, kind of, kind of like, just because of the, the initial drop and of the columns, you know what I mean, you have all these new employees, if you have employees that are within that timeframe of that F category, you know, between the.
You're not leaving your other employees behind.
Yeah, you're not just sitting there going, okay, well, if you move these up to now, and then you don't have to worry about that, hide new hires, you know, so, but I do understand the fact that, you know, being the transparent part of it, where even if you're, you still have that ability to do that, you just have to bring it to the commission.
And that's probably good to have it before the commission.
Yeah, I feel like, yeah, like Mike said, you know, drafting something, bringing it to us, and then letting us decide from there, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Anything else on that?
Wait, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you guys feel comfortable with this, with the way the review came by, the numbers, as supervisors?
Yeah, it's just hard to get a comparison, I mean, there's too many variables, they go to Grand Forks, you know, they break their departments down in little areas, our department covers everything that individual groups would do in Grand Forks.
Grand Forks, they have a water treatment plant guy, that, that's what he does, they have a meter reader, that's what he does, they have distribution.
Is actually, the results of this actually about the same as their last?
The meter reading now is done by mobile, or can you get it all from the office now?
Not yet.
Does that work, are we working it?
And we're well on that, and all, all departments, really, I mean, same as firefighters, same as PD, you know, it's, we operate so different than everybody does in each, each county, so.
She must be doing something consistent, though, because this one runs pretty close to the last one she did, what, three, four years ago?
I think the wage is good, it's just hiring people out of the chute, and seeing what they're made of, and what they know, and their capabilities, being able to start them low, see what you got, as an employee, that surprised me.
The benefit packages, are they equal to a lot of the other communities, the benefit pack, are they huddle-wack, our benefit package?
Compared to like MDU and.
You know, to all those others.
NDTC, I mean, I think our.
We'll never, we'll never compare to like MDU or anything like that.
What's their benefits that are so much different? Vacation, well, no, the wages, I mean, but.
We're talking about the, the.
Health benefits, vacation, sick leave, that type of stuff.
I don't know.
Because some, some of that, this, this is, those are besides this.
Right. I would say, if you do a comparison on like the NDC's pension plan versus what they're probably getting for a 401K, the NDC, there's a reason people want to be in the NDC's pension.
Yeah, we're paying pretty good there.
It is good, and we, we provide a very favorable comp sure on that, as far as the city, as far as health insurance, I can't say.
I think that gets, that gets lost when you start talking about.
Well, they want the dollars.
Yeah, you can make more, but you're going to be spending that more to pay for your benefits and everything else that you're getting, so it's, it's a, it's a one-one situation.
I think with a lot of 401Ks, you can get, you're in a good situation if you can get up to a 3% or a 5% match, but the equivalent on, on the city side.
Were we 7%?
We're putting 10.
10.
10.
And they put it in 7.
Yeah, about 7, a little under 7.
You can't, I mean, so that should be an incentive, you know, that should be stressed when you're hiring, that, hey, we may not have the top dollar, but we have a benefit package that's probably going to be.
They hire somebody in their mid-20s, you know, it's.
Yeah, they don't hear about retirement. Figure five years out, go money.
I think the health benefit package is about the same as Benson County, just because my wife works there, and I know what hers is like, so that comparison's about the same.
I think the city's health plan is very good, comparable to the other places.
Still 80/20, but it's a good health plan. Okay, anybody know anything else? That's it for public works?
I would, I was envisioning, I was going to be on the phone, so I, that's why I put the item first, knowing our friends from law enforcement center, I would have put them first, and I know we were going to have, sorry to make you wait.
This gives her a chance where she's not running around everywhere like she normally has to do, she's actually relaxed and seated.
Well, I guess with that, we'll bring Star up for law enforcement center.
Good afternoon.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Star Clemente, the director at the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center, I believe that you guys have all been presented with our budgets, I'll just go through each of them on things you need to know, I guess, on the 911 side, we're not doing very much, the only thing of major importance is we're doing a radio connection to the courthouse, right now, it is copper line, and they want to do it fiber, so that's a $10,500 bill, and we're replacing computers and dispatch, they're up for replacement, and then it's just salaries, we have a 911 coordinator, one lieutenant, a sergeant, eight dispatchers, and one part-time employee, do you have any questions about the 911 side?
How many years are left on the Siren, Siren council budget?
Yeah, I, I am, I have your revenue in front, I don't have your 911.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, we just keep going.
This is the revenue.
Oh, revenue, yeah.
Yeah, you go to our expenses.
It's right below it.
It's just right below.
Front powers expenditure on the first page.
Okay, down here, oh. Sorry, I was just trying to follow, okay, and you said 10,000 for what?
It is a radio connection to the courthouse.
For copper wire to fiber, and that was, they, they, has there been talk about pay, having to pay for that, since they're saying it has to be done?
There has been a little bit of talk, but it's something that probably needs to be done anyways.
Okay, so it's one of those catch-22?
On the Cyren loan, that would be a question for Jess, I think this is probably the last year.
I was curious, just for.
Just so you guys are aware, every year, just like anything else, a lot of these things are going up, it baffles my mind sometimes for the, for maintenance costs for a lot of this computer system stuff, it constantly goes up, and I'm just, baffles me how we're, how it's even legal to.
Well, just in our annual maintenance for 911, it's $162,600 in annual maintenance.
The more, the more technical we go, the more that's going to go up?
On the salaries, are, what are you guys looking at for COLA this year?
3%.
3%. Jeff, can you, what's the county looking at, do you know?
I think right around that 3%.
Thanks.
One thing that I did say at one time, and I'll, I'll be the bad guy and say it, I just, I don't understand why every year it's expected a COLA, you know, when did that become a guarantee-type thing, you know what I mean? I'm not trying to be a bad guy, I'm just.
Well, I remember some years where we didn't get COLAs, that was a common practice.
I think it's something we need to start really looking at, when we start looking at these budgets, and it just, because I know, as, as a contracted employee, I'm lucky if I see 1.5% increase, you know.
Well, they cost a lot of money.
Yeah, so we, I think, and like I said, I'll be pointed out as a bad guy, but I'm all right with that, just making sure we check and.
You know, we've got restrictions on, on the city and the county now, with the, with legislators have mandated, and so it makes it a little tougher to try to, you know, come up with a 3% COLA, I know, I don't know how you feel, but it is a little difficult, and it's hard, you know, too, with the county and the law enforcement center, you know, and we're contributing to the center, and then we're only offering 2%, you know, and it's kind of like, but we have to fall within what our income levels are.
One thing to keep in mind is that our employees don't have PERS.
They don't have.
They do not have PERS, we have been trying to get PERS for the last 20 years.
Didn't they get recognized as first responders?
They did, but we cannot come up with enough money to make that work, so.
Are you offering any kind of retirement?
We offer a 401K.
Which is a lot of private, what private companies are doing.
Yeah, that's nothing like PERS, though.
No, you're correct, but it costs money, you're right. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay, I'm going to go to the reentry center next, we did most of our big purchases this year, so the only thing in the reentry center's budget for replacement is mattresses, and that's $2,500, other than that, it's all salaries. One thing to note is that I moved the community service officer over to the RRC budget, because all of the expenses for the community service program come out of the RRC budget, so all the income and expenses for that are over there, so I moved her salary over there.
Where was that previously, Star?
It was on the LEC side.
That food bill keeps going up, doesn't it?
And that's one thing that I am looking at more closely, so in previous years, the budget for the food has been down, and this, next year, I budgeted for 90 people in jail every day, because that's what we're hoping for, so I am looking at that one, because there is some income that maybe can be increased, because we're holding more state pen people.
And it's kind of tough when you only get one, one bid coming in to take care of the food, instead of multiple, you know, you're kind of stuck.
What's the per-day cost of a contract meal?
$16 a day.
$16.
For next year.
Per person.
Yep, it went up 15 cents a day.
So are you guys at 90 now, is that your total, for people, or has that changed?
We, uh, we can hold 105.
We've been completely cleared of everything, we're wide open to full capacity if we can get there.
So you gotta leave, and you guys go?
On the LEC side, we have, we're reprogramming our jail radios, which costs, so we bought a whole bunch of radios from the surplus in Bismarck, and those radios need to be reprogrammed to our channel, so that's about $5,000, mattress replacement for $9,000, two vehicles for $60,000, and a program called Correct Tech, which is a medical records program for our nurse and our counselor, the rest is staff, there's 22 in the jail, then we have four medical slash mental health providers, and then eight administrative.
We still have two financial officers, or people?
We have one financial officer and one accounts payable officer.
Those are both full-time now?
One is part-time.
And there's other, just so you're aware, there's other avenues we're, we're looking to at maybe having that be a private accountant, so we don't have to pay the extra, you know, benefits on top of that, we're just comparing to see which is going to be better financially.
The 911 budget and the RRC budget were both approved at our board meeting, the LEC budget, we have another meeting on Wednesday of this week for budget discussion.
You don't mind me asking, what was the hang-up on that?
They just wanted to look at it closer.
It wasn't anything extraordinary, there's just different ways of lining things up depending on cost share and other, but it, nothing really huge.
So you got a column here that says 2026 budget, 3%, no captain?
Yes, that's the budget that we're going off of, I made one with the captain, and one without the captain, because there is a joint powers account, where Ramsey County pays for the captain's salary and benefits. And it was decided that that's how it's going to stay.
I'm sorry, stay that way, with the county, I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, the captain will fall into the county, not.
He gets pretty cut and dry, eh? I mean, really, how do you argue about it outside of a two percent, three percent? I mean, I realize that, but.
As long as we can maintain ninety people in the jail, I guess that kind of pays the bills, right?
Right now, the, uh, it, it helps.
It does.
And we have a significant amount of state inmates, so.
So is the budget's based off the ninety people in the jail?
Yeah.
So we hope it don't fall under that.
The trends have been going, I don't think it's gonna be much.
What's the chances of failing any inspection? I mean, I know you can't predict that.
We'd be optimistic.
Well, it seems to be frustrating, you know?
We're not gonna fail and we, we just got.
I mean.
Hundred percent good to go. We'll get just our every year.
Every year now.
At once a year, regular inspection.
I mean.
There is a chance.
Inspections, there's always finding something.
There is, there, there is always a chance.
I mean, but to shut us down or reduce us, you know?
Yeah.
That's a financial hit that.
It is.
They mandate stuff and then they take our money away by taking people away. That, that's a, not a good situation.
The only concern that I have right now is losing the state inmates that we have. Because it's probably half of our population.
Why would you lose them or what would?
Well, because the state is building all these mini, mini prisons, so.
Why can't we get one of those mini prisons? That's. I think that's.
I could go an hour for that.
Well, I, I, I think it's something that at some point this community's gotta jump on board. Either we're gonna go after one or, you know, cause it's expensive.
And I believe that, uh, Jason approached Mr. Brown about it and.
But I don't think we can give up. You know, we probably need more involvement.
I called and spoke to him personally. I said, have you thought about Devil's Lake for one of these? Because we're a central hub in the middle of everything.
They want us to be original and they bring us.
And they said, we don't have the, uh, recruit enough people to recruit to work there compared to where we are, compared to Bismarck and Minot and all these other bigger cities. I said, if you have jobs available, people will come here. That helps us and helps you.
Especially if you can provide us a, a new facility to work out of where you've got the latest and greatest technology.
I think that's all tied up in Bismarck with the deals and other things and where it's gonna go and who gets the money within the state and all that stuff, so. But Joe, it was, it was, it was tried, it was argued for, it was.
You know, this is, you know, it's a huge budget.
Yeah. Well, that, a lot of, like, when you start looking at the nine one, or the reentry center too, we have, I had just had to send an email to, Senator Hovind's office again. The Bureau of Prisons are real, they get gave behind on paying their fees. To, to the point, to the prices of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And they've been taking care of them to try and get them to pay the back pay. When they're paying the back pay, then the current pay that they, that they have to send us gets pushed back. And I said that we cannot operate in the black light, or, you know, in the red light. Just, we have to be able to have money to keep everything functioning like any normal business does. And I'm still waiting to hear back from them because I don't know, I wanna know where the hangup is between the LEC, the, the reentry center, our accounting, sending the bill out. And when they get it, why is, why aren't they getting paid? What's the holdup? Where is it blocking right now? So I'm waiting to hear back from them because we're always showing a loss every, every month. Because that money's not coming in. It's accounted for, but it's not coming in.
So are you getting two new cars, two vehicles?
Used.
Two, two used vehicles?
Gently used.
So what do you guys do with those?
Uh, one would be for administrative, so that, like, when we send people to trainings for that. And the other would be probably a transport vehicle. So we're talking about getting back into the transport business.
More money in that?
Yes. I, at first I had only budgeted thirty thousand for two vehicles and I was told, you don't get used vehicles.
Yeah, you ain't gonna get.
So I did increase that.
Do we really wanna get in the transport business if we're?
If we're gonna hold marshals, we do.
If we help, say that again?
Hold US Marshals.
Oh.
Plus, it probably could help the counties for transporting to Bismarck, for transporting to court. Or you never know what transporting could.
And, and people, the people will be charged for the extra stuff as well, so it's not, it's more money coming in by doing that. Which you have trouble getting some, some counties to come and travel to, to do pickups and things of that nature because of the manpower they have. So this could be an added bonus to, to have the ability to do it.
Any other questions? Spencer, you've worked with her on the budget and stuff and got things. No other questions? Appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
See you tomorrow, see you on Wednesday.
See you Wednesday.
All right, the next.
See you, Jeff.
Yep, we'll see you, Jeff. Okay, item four is street department and highway distribution.
I'm a member of the commission. I told Wade, I said, you gotta tell him what are the three biggest, two or three biggest things you wanna know about streets and highway. And then we'll talk about cemetery here shortly. But I'm gonna turn over to Wade and Mike. Things kind of separate, run the mill of sort of salaries and whatnot in the highway, street and highway distribution department, so. Wade, what do you got?
Well, we got some equipment coming up that's on lease. We're gonna do a buy all the time. So it's a road grader, John, your road grader, or John, your payloader. And that's my biggest purchases for, for the year.
Those are in the highway distribution department. You'll see the equipment on the three thirty-five. Equipment we've leased for five years. We're not gonna purchase and buy that out and should hold us over with those for ten to fifteen year, or we said. Mike, remind me, what was the timeframe on that?
Twenty years.
Twenty, yeah, total.
Just about to ask, what's the life cycle for something like that?
Twenty years and then the, uh, we'll have, uh, you know, we're rotating, so we have two sets. So every ten years you'd have one, but the oldest one would be twenty years old. That's how we kinda have it set up. We do have, uh, we were looking at the new loader and motor grader, uh, another five years from now. But we may have to move the loader up and we're watching that a little bit. One of the loaders are getting a little bit tired, but.
Still looking at leasing or are you just gonna do the?
As an option.
Yeah, the, the numbers worked out best last time. We looked at options related to a, a purchase price. Or a lease-to-buy price. And then we evaluated that and based on where we were at, we chose the lease-to-buy. So we're five years into it currently and the buy then is this year. But it's been operating very well and so our attempt is to buy it.
That, that total to buy those two pieces of equipment, that's the three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
And we'll provide the full leap of replacement plan while we put the whole package in. We're just, some finer details. Specifically with water and streets and their equipment reserves. To do with some further projecting down the road beyond just this twenty by six. So we'll, we'll continue working on that.
All other budget items are pretty simple. That's the one that stands out, so we wanna make sure that we run your attention.
There's been slight increases here and there, but otherwise.
There's nothing. Equipment's expensive no matter what.
It may.
You need it, yeah.
I would just say, so back in, oh, it was. So middle of twenty twenty-four, we had projected, uh, fuel prices at a level higher than they are currently. And so I just carried, you know, who knows what's, what's gonna happen with oil and fuel. So I just took the same number.
We went down a penny today.
So we just took the same number we budgeted for twenty twenty. Cause twenty twenty-four was pretty, I remember like, when it was twenty twenty-three, yeah, fuel prices were really high, so we did that for twenty twenty-four. So for this, twenty twenty-six, we're just carrying the number over. To hedge against any, I don't know, there. With the state of foreign policy, we'll be those, but tomorrow could bring.
There's not much difference.
Cemetery side, if you're ready, Mary, we can just go through.
You good with this on your side? Okay. All right.
Cemetery. If you please, I'll give Wade and Mike a chance just to talk about the operational side of cemetery and then I'll go through as, as far as the funding sources and the rates and fees and kind of where we're at and where we as staff feel like we should get going. But Wade and Mike, as far as operations on the cemetery, does anyone want to report?
We increased the fuel expenses.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so I did. But i- in regards to cemetery, you know, over the past, we'll say, five years, um, the rates and fees on the cemetery haven't been, haven't been.
I better buy my watch before you raise the prices.
Right.
Haven't been adjusted and what we've really been doing is funding it through just the growth in the property tax revenue that we've had over the last five years. That's ran a deficit. We had a really high reserve balance about five years ago and it slowly kind of decreased. We're still in a fine spot with it, but really, you know, especially with the, the changes and trying to be more strategic. You'll see on the spreadsheet that our rates and fees are, they're cheap right now. They literally, well, not intended, not intended. But they are very, very low. And so trying to get to a point where for the cemetery, there's a break even point and talk with Mike. Where, you know, fifty percent of the revenue needed comes from property tax and fifty percent will come from rates and fees. That that would be a good equalizer to get to. Um, not all in one year, but incrementally over time. And so this being the first, it may be a three, four year process of doing that. Um, as you can see, and then the proposed adjustment, adjustments, you can see where we're at. What we're proposing for rates and fees and where everywhere else is. Everywhere else is, and we are still very, very low.
Why, why haven't, why wasn't the Saturday or holiday Sunday burials adjusted? Does this happen a lot?
Not really. It, it just entirely, we didn't feel like there'd be much bank here. There, there wasn't any compounding, uh, effect to it and it didn't seem like anything that really needed to be adjusted. If you look at the others, right, we felt, you know, a lot of it's comparison to others, right?
Yeah.
So we felt the one fifteen, two hundred were in line with whatever else.
So we get to, we'll address these rates when we look at rates and fees.
Yeah, so these are the, these are gonna be the proposed rates and fees that are gonna be before you in our October meeting when we request final approval of the budget and setting rates and fees. Traditionally, you know, the city had previously done the rates and fees like the last meeting before January. But our revenues should line up with the budget, I think, and so we should approve those rates and fees in advance. And true, my perspective.
Have any other questions?
Could we even increase them even more? I mean, when you compare?
Yeah, so, so that we were trying, we, we've taken, Mike and I, or at least we're proposing to the commission more of a three, four year incremental approach, but if you guys wanna go bang, we can go bang. It's up to you guys. That, that's, we, we took kind of a three year, four year kind of, hey, if we did this, it's gonna get us where we need to be. But if you guys wanna flip it, we can. It's up to you, it is up to you guys.
I, I see where, compared to the others, I mean, it almost makes sense.
And I think if, you know, if you die and you, you need to be buried, I mean.
You just think that two, two, two big of an increase at one time is gonna kind of make people go.
Well, yeah.
You know what I mean? I, I understand what you're saying.
Probably not gonna get buried somewhere else, though.
Your wife told me she loved me.
Get them over the head with it, start there.
Yeah.
Still digging. Yeah.
All right, I don't got anything.
Yeah, I think we'll be good.
Okay, we have water and sewer. Water and sewer. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Joel and Mike and then we can talk about the rates and fees on the water side. But as far as big business that's coming before their departments, I will let them speak for themselves, Mike and Joel. As far as water goes, maybe to start?
There isn't much change to anything. We're going to replace two pickups next year. We have a three-quarter ton and another pickup. That can go down the way. Other than that, there's a few up, upgrades on SCADA. It's not real big dollars from what it was last year or the year before. Other than that.
What we're trying to do within the departments is allocate expenses in the appropriate line items. You know, so when you're looking at the water system in particular, it costs us this much money to operate a well, take the water, uh, out of the ground, push it through thirty-two miles of pipeline and get it to the city. And this is how much it costs for the water treatment aspect. And then this is what it costs for the distribution aspect. So we try and break that out, including the allocation for the personnel. And a couple of reasons for that is you wanna know where your costs are associated, um, within the whole realm of, uh, the water treatment, water distribution. But also we, we do that because there's certain, like the rural water systems that buy bulk water from us. They're only, we're only charging them for a portion of it. How much does it cost us to get water out of the ground to town and treat it and provide it to you? They don't necessarily pay the distribution expenses. So we break that out a little bit so we can get a true cost per thousand when we're looking at those expenses and revenue streams. So that's how, uh, that's kind of broke out. One thing you'll know, you know, for the most part, our water system is fairly new, right? And so the wells are relatively new. When I say relatively new, we started using them in two thousand and nine, but we've been pretty fortunate. The pumps is relatively new. The day will come where we have to replace pumps, we have to replace wells, we have to redo filter beds, we have to renew our water treatment plant. So it's important that you have a depreciation schedule as well. We're trying to hit a little bit more on the reserves, uh, but that's all come supplemental with the rates and fees. And Spencer can speak to the rates and fees a little bit, but we went through that.
I think specifically with water and sewer. So we had talked about those interest earnings, part of the sales tax, that's the thing with the operations. So the over three million dollars that's in the water source replacement fund, the interest, we put that in the market, the interest earnings that were being earned on that, we're previously going to help pay for water and sewer equipment reserves. As remember from the last presentation, we're gonna propose shifting that to the general fund because there's, it's gonna be really hard to balance that without really some severe cuts without doing that. And you'll see, um, in the equipment reserve transfers. So normally traditionally we had used like twenty, like for the water pump, we'd use twenty. I highlighted the number forty. So we have projected a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in interest. So we had, it's split three ways. Forty thousand to water, forty thousand to sewer, forty thousand to wastewater. And so we're trying to get to a point where these util, where the utility funds are self-sustaining on themselves. You'll see when we talk about rates and fees, how low our water and sewer rates are, which is an excellent thing. And we're gonna try work up plans that are gonna maintain that. But, um, again, like the cemetery thing, we're trying to do it incrementally over time. And so we're not putting away as much into our equipment or reserve as we should, uh, as we previously have been. But in the interest of the rate increases incrementally that are manageable, um, that's kind of the strategy that we're taking with it. And as far as water and sewer goes, there's two bigger investments that are kind of come down the pipe. I don't know if you wanna talk about meters and spinners. Mike, do you wanna talk about what you're doing there and some of the investments that we should probably make here sooner rather than later that haven't traditionally been, they put in a placement plan? Looking at the opportunity, Mike.
Yeah, you know, the day will come when we have to replace the water meters throughout town. Uh, we did replace them. We were fortunate enough to secure some funding through the federal government. There was some additional funding available through our water treatment plant expansions to purchase new water meters. Those water meters, uh, I think we got them in like two thousand and twelve timeframe, something like that. There's always newer technology out there and when you go with newer technology, things have to be updated and things are perfect and all of that stuff. The brass itself doesn't change, but the heads, the important stuff, uh, that's giving you the information changes. So the day will come when we look at that and whether we go to a fixed base system. So the day will come when we look at that and whether we go to a fixed base system. Mayor, back in the day when you were out, it was forty, you, you, uh, we were allocating twenty man hours a week to read meters. And then we went, you know, to a system where we could do drive-by and we can get the entire, you know, we do two routes and we can get it done in the morning for route. And that's been working very well for us. There's a fixed base system where, uh, up at city hall, you can hit a button and get a read out every meter in town. When somebody's moving out, you can just hit the button. You don't call a toll and have the crew go out there or have somebody go read the meter. Much more convenient. So that's something that we're looking at, you know, in addition to that, we're looking at if water use stays really high, we've been pretty fortunate this last year or two, but if water use stays really high, we may have to look at water system expansion where we can get more water to town or water treatment plant can handle the water. We just have to have the ability to get more water to it. So we've looked at that. Really don't want to purchase anything, uh, if you really don't need it because it could depreciate before you get a chance to fully utilize it. So that's something that's there, it's on the shelf, something that we're looking at. That's going to be a big item. And then, you know, with our lagoon wastewater treatment process, something that we're, uh, you know, for two weeks in the springtime, sometimes when you get that little bite of odor, that can happen.
You don't want to go on a little bite.
So when you have that, there's people that call and what are we going to do to fix it? And they want to spend any amount of money to fix it and are willing to pay more in their utility bill for it. But then it goes away, right? A strong wind, we get the turnover, it happens fairly quickly. And now it's fix my road and don't charge me anymore on my utility rate. Uh, we do have some old spinners that were put in there, mixers is what they are. The whole idea is you try and turn that water column over a little bit. We have four of them. We're getting a couple of them refurbished as we speak. Uh, there is potential to add more to that and try and reduce that turnover timeframe. And with that, that's going to be expenses as well. I mean, one of those spinner units, forty thousand dollars a piece. Zone of influence, uh, on one of them is about three to five acres. Our primary cell is over a hundred acres big. But, um, we have a lot of treatment capacity there. Lemon has been working out very well for us, so we have a lot of capacity. I would say we would want to stay away from any mechanical wastewater treatment type system. Because we have a lot of area. Let, uh, the sunlight, let the wind, let the oxygen, let the bugs do what they do. If we try and go to a mechanical system to try and get away from odors in the springtime, we're going to be paying a lot of money for a treatment system when we really don't need to.
How am I going to truly know it's springtime without the odor?
You'll have it year round if you have the spinners.
And there's all kinds of things that you can do to try and reduce that. But realistically, a couple of good days of wind and it turns over very quickly.
Because, you know, next day it could be, could be winter again. I mean, I just got to know it's spring.
So those are some items. I mean, there's always the items, our equipment replacement schedule as well. We have our line going through with Spencer. So, uh, there's some equipment in the future that.
So really as far as in working with the, the public works team and all the teams, we're just really trying to set, hey, what are going to be our needs five years from now? So all of a sudden we don't get hit with huge bills, right? And so we can start stocking money away now. And some of these rate increases are just going to be, you know, we didn't, just so you guys know, last year we didn't increase water and sewer rates. Probably, I mean, in hindsight, probably should have just a little bit, just to, um, just keep up a little bit, but you know, they're just kind of two parts of it, right? Is one, getting us to where we need to, we should be right now. And then also two, having to take on that extra burden of funding our own equipment instead of using those creative interest earnings ways of doing that. And so, um, on the water and sewer side, I have, like, move to the rates and fees. This is just to give you a snapshot, our water and sewer, if you use six thou, six thousand gallons of water, these are our utility rates, the lowest in pretty much all of North Dakota and South Dakota, of any reputable community of any significant effect. Something that the city's always been really proud of, something that we're hoping to aspire to continue to. And, you know, Mayor, when we did the sales tax and we had a lot of conversations with people trying to see, you know, what is the true cost to go? And we do a lot of back and forth and everything's different, right? And I, I just look at our water and sewer rates. If you take what our water and sewer rates are right now compared to what the average was in the upper Midwest per this A two S report, it's a difference of three hundred and five dollars a year. Right? Right? And so if you did that on, on, what, what is that? Because people like to talk property tax. What is that on property tax? If you own a three hundred thousand dollar house, it's over twenty mils. So it's like the equivalent of the city levying instead of ninety mils, it's seventy mils, but then you'd be paying average utility rates. I think some people, you know, when you put it in terms like that, I think people fully understand because you're paying for a lot more than just on your property expel. So I think that's something that the city can be really proud of. I think we should tell that story more, to be frank. That really what makes Devil's Lake a great and affordable place to live, other than all the great things around us is I think this makes it very important. And I think when you spell it out like that, I think it shows. There was another one. Okay, so then the projected rate changes, uh, water per gallon from three fifty to four. Sewer base from fourteen ninety to fifteen seventy-five, which is the equivalent of, and then the per one thousand gallons from four twenty-five to four fifty. And then if you look at the overall, so at the last meeting, we talked about, you know, where would we fall relative in this chart? Obviously, the entire utility bill is different than just the water and sewer, but if you look at these charts and the graphs, when we were talking about lowering the water source replacement fee from nine dollars to five fifty and transitioning that to a forestry fee, if you look at just the water and sewer rates, it's less than a two percent decrease after those changes. And so we're still the lowest in the land by far, not even close, no questions asked in terms of that. So is there anything that I forgot to say, Mike, that I should have said?
No, I would invite the commissioner anytime if they would like to have a tour of our water treatment facilities. I'm very proud of the operators up there. I mean, that thing, uh, you know, some components of it sixteen years old, another section of it is like thirteen years old. And if you walk in there, so it's brand new, right? So they do a very good job of keeping things clean and operating and very conscientious on the water quality that's leaves that system. But if anybody would ever want to tour and do some of that stuff, we'd be willing to facilitate that.
So this is like the maintenance budget and that will hopefully just stay the way it is usually. It's long term for water. You need a healthy, healthy reserve. Everything's fairly new right now, but we should take advantage of that now for future use. We have four filter media, filter beds to change the media and one of those is probably a hundred grams. Things like that.
How many are there?
Four. Pumps are sixty thousand a piece. We have three of those that are more than that. So it's long term. They want that money there.
Another thing too, that just relates to sewer and the rates and fees, which should just be aware of is, uh, obviously we've taken over, we've taken over the, the dike project, it's over, it's closed out. We're in charge of the maintenance and operations. We're trying to with the congressional delegation, get some traction on, on getting the core of engineers to, instead of off them, instead of not remitting us that authorized funding to prioritizing the funding to help with support to the two hundred thousand dollars. We need to make an effort to run at that, get some clarity, um, if we're going to be able to get some of that money. If not, over time, we're probably going to have to explore ways through our rates and fees to help cover some of those maintenance costs. Uh, whether it be between sales tax and, uh, rates and fees, uh, long term. So that'll be a conversation to have with you guys. Right now, we owe two point, right now, we have a negative cash balance of two point one eight four million dollars attributed to the dike that we're using three hundred thousand dollars worth of sales tax every year to pay off. And there's ways that we could, we could get creative, um, to free up sales tax money if we ever needed to. Again, we can't just shove it in the general fund because we only put forty-four percent in there, but for infrastructure type of things. So something that Mike and I talk about frequently and may need to have more in this conversation with you, Mayor, and Commissioner Knowski on where we stand.
That flood protection project cost us a hundred and seventy million dollars. Right, the east pump station alone was seventeen million dollars. Inside that pump station's eight pumps, just replace one of those pumps, be over half a million dollars a piece. We have to make sure that the federal government is working with us for that operation maintenance expense. It's one thing to pay the electric bill, mow the grass, replace some rip rap. It's an entire, another item if we have a major infrastructure issue where a pump or two fail and have to be replaced. A trash rack and a trash raking system has some issues. Everything's complicated, everything's very expensive. So we have to do what we can to make sure that we can secure funding to the extent practical and not have to pay for it all over our own pockets.
Anything else? We move on to sanitation.
Mayor, obviously something that we've been talking quite a bit about as of the last year or so with the transition to automation and recycling services and whatnot, uh, but providing Cory here an opportunity to let you guys know, hey, this is where the department's heading and what we're looking at. As far as the, so give Cory an opportunity to just talk about his department and then as far as some of the particulars on the finances with the automated truck and then new cans and all that sort of stuff that we have here in store, so.
Well, basically, uh, within the sanitation department, you have three departments, the air waste, transfer station, and then sanitation. Really, there ain't a whole lot of new things with them. It's pretty much cut and dry, except for if you look at the new equipment under sanitation operations. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand, of course, that's for the automated truck and everything that goes with it. And I believe four fifty of that is going to be some sort of a loan, whether it's USDA or whatever we go with. And then the other three hundred would be held back from last, from this year till next year to use towards the automated system. It's, it's, uh, the new equipment, the three hundred thousand is new equipment for, that was allotted for this year that we're going to hold off and use as part of that seven fifty.
Cory, while you're talking with the changes to roll, roll off with the rent, yeah, roll off rental.
Under revenue.
Yeah, and, yeah, you want to talk about that with Nordic and what, how that changes some things for us.
Yeah, if you look at the twenty fours numbers for revenue under roll off rental and then are projected for twenty-six, you can see there's quite a bit of a increase in that. Yet if you look at the landfill tipping, there's a decrease. Quite a decrease in it. And then the reason for that is Nordic fiberglass bought a garbage truck several years ago and they compact all of their weight. They're kind of a big user of our landfill. I think they generate roughly fifty thousand dollars a year in tipping fees by hauling it out with their garbage truck. Well, they came up with some new EPA rules or something where they have to protect the fiberglass waste from being out in the open elements. So they chose to get rid of their garbage truck and now they're going to five roll offs that they rent from us. And I know what, a month ago, you guys authorized the extra money to purchase them to cover that. So basically, basically their forty-seven thousand dollar a year revenue that we got from them through using their garbage truck will now be like a roughly approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollar revenue. It'll be the same material hauled out, but just in a different form that's actually kind of an advantage to us, you know. Otherwise, I don't see a whole lot of change.
We're not going to do the blue bags much anymore, that's going to go away.
So that talks about, you know, we've talked about the realignment in the sanitation department. Going towards automated, what we've done with recycling. And the other thing we want to talk to you guys about is special pickup. We would, we would like to propose that instead of doing the two special pickups, that we would reduce down to one. This is something we've talked about over the last couple of years, primarily because of, well, I'll let Cory list all the reasons, but, um, you know, if we're going to go down, we're going to take down one staff member because of the automation, right? Through attrition, you know, when we have those openings, just not filling them. What we see on the ground and just in general, um, people have been reducing that service. Not that we want to provide lower quality service, but we can still get the bank for a buck and help the citizens of Devil's Lake with that one special pickup if we do a good job at it. So I, I'd like Cory comment on special pickup and then have a dialogue with you guys.
Well, you know, we've done it twice a year forever. And I've actually part of one of the crew, I'm in the skid steer that goes on, starts at one end of town, you know, like higher crew on the other end. So I see what happens every year. I've noticed over the last six, eight years that it's really starting to get, I hate to use the word abused, but it is getting abused. You know, we have a limit on what the citizens can take. But they're, we're, we're seeing a lot more material than what they're able to put out, but they're willing to pay for that. But when you look at what they're putting out extra, I mean, you go to a lot of houses and they're getting rid of fifteen, twenty appliances a year. You know, they're getting rid of five, six grills a year, well, you don't. So that, that's one of the reasons. I think the people that use the program properly are, are more than happy with having it being done once a year versus twice a year because then we can save the city some money by doing that. And then in doing so to not completely take the service away, you know, the, the half of it, we're going to come up with some ways to maybe possibly have, you know, more free dump time prior to the time that we do the one time a year. So, so, but that's just, the, the three ones to me are, that are huge is the, you know, savings for the city. The overuse of it, we should say. And then just with employees, once we get set in with this automated system, you know, we'll have one or two less employees, so.
And so what our proposal is, we did, you know, we did the spring one, we would do fall twenty twenty-five, we would do spring and we would target late May, early June for one and then just not do the fall twenty twenty-six is what we would be proposing.
You know, we've had some of them springs where we do that spring cleanup, we've actually had a foot of snow. So then people didn't get to utilize that part of it. So we're thinking that by doing this, we'll, we'll go a little bit further.
A lot of the other community, communities are just one time a year or don't even do it.
A lot are going away from doing it, period. But a lot of them that were doing it twice are definitely don't. I can't think of a community besides us that are doing it twice now.
I just worry about the nuisances, how it's going to create more if they put that stuff out there.
Yeah. So now they go down to one year, so now are they going to have twelve grills instead of six?
Well, you got to understand, they still have, they still have one four hour block a, a month to dump for free out to take it to the landfill.
Is there something we could do to offer a dumping up at the, send it up in the hill rather than go to the landfill? For a certain amount of stuff?
Well, we, we do that now, but it's actually an extra expense because if it's heavy stuff, we got to go out with a skid steer and load it into a roll off. Yeah. It, it would just get to be too much.
I'm just trying to think, you know, because to me, going to the landfill, I don't want to get flat tires. That's my problem.
And in all honesty, a lot of people say that, but I drive out there constantly.
Yeah, and you don't have a problem.
City pickup, mind you, but I rarely have a flat tire, I just.
Okay.
And how, how is, what is, what's the capacity right now of our current landfill? Are we, are we getting to the point where we should start looking?
Well, actually, Mike and I, we've been, yeah, last year, we've been really hitting it hard. I mean, and you're just so limited because, you know, like Mike says, if people don't have to sell property, why would you want to? And it's so hard to, but we're working with some people out that have landlords out there.
That, that is a piece of the capital for, for that, I hope.
But I'm, I'm guessing we have probably a three to five would be pushing it lifespan left on our landfill. But it ain't something you just close one and open the other.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you got infrastructure, you got all sorts of things permitted, so, yeah, we're working on it, hopefully. We resolve it.
Yes, I wouldn't be against going to the one. I, I do.
And I, like you said, the nuisance thing?
We'll just have to deal with it and charge them.
And there're going to be nuisances regardless if they're stewarding.
And in all honesty, it would have definitely changed.
Yeah, it's not going to change.
They'll just have to pay for it the way it probably should be. But I just want to, we're doing, we're offering up enough freebie stuff to compensate for the.
Well, I think what we'll do is we'll offer, right now, we offer a week prior to the start of the spring fall project. We'll offer two weeks. Right now, we offer the second Saturday of every month, April through September. You know, maybe we start in March and then go into November, you know, add two more Saturdays. and.
And then, if you want to talk the rates and fees, just some incremental changes. So as far as the base and the per can charge, when we go automated and we change from having, you know, your thirty two gallon cans, one, two, three, when we go to sixty four or ninety six, be your choice, there's going to have to be some changes to the rates and fees and those sorts of things. But these are just incremental changes on the sanitation base charge and the per can charge, and then on the commercial dumpster change in the per TB car from twelve to twelve fifty, inert landfill rates, as you can see, those adjustments, and then the roll offs are basically just calculations of, you know, twenty one, twenty one yards times the inert waste rate and whatnot, so. And then, you know, as a comparison, I, I put the, you know, what the changes are on the next page for if you have one can, two cans, or three cans, excuse me, that third one's supposed to say three cans, not two cans. But I, I just, I look at our rates and fees as far as for, for sanitation services as well, you know, you talk about water and sewer, how we're low. I mean, I can, I know not, I know multiple people that would take two hands that pay that first call per, per can on the very bottom, right? You know, what you'd take for a ninety six yard or a ninety six gallon can out in the county.
Seventy eight bucks.
It's crazy. You know, I, I think there's a, there's an, I think the rates are a little inconsistent, but I know, I know a lot of people that pay that.
Only.
Yeah.
Hope we don't have to go to that.
Versus what the equivalent, yeah, you know, versus what the equivalent three cans and devils like would be, you're talking over the course of your four hundred dollars savings. So you're thinking, you just, you know, add between our water and sewer rates compared to the average water and sewer rates, and our sanitation rates compared to what you pay outside city limits, there's over seven hundred dollars difference over the course of the year. So again, we talked about the true cost of government, where are our savings at, those sorts of things. It's a, it's a much greater picture than the black and whites and people like to paint. And I want to make sure that we, that, that's very well known.
Any questions? Thanks Cory, Mike.
Thank you.
And the last item is the capital improvement plan.
Mayor Moll, members of the commission, this is something that, at least since I've been here, we take a lot of pride in this. There is a lot of work that goes into it. Devin does a lot of it and Mike as well, and we meet frequently. And so we tried to put together a, a really good capital improvement plan every year for you guys. There's a lot of communities that would pay thousands and thousands of dollars to get a product less quality than this, okay? And so number one, that's a compliment to Devin and Mike in the back who worked really hard on this. They put probably more numbers together than they need to for this purpose. But it's something that we're all really proud of. We want you guys to feel like the city's priorities are well reflected in it. There are some maps that we didn't include right now, but as far as the final plan, that we'll include those maps. But I'll turn it over to Devin and Mike to give the high level overview.
Yeah, we, like Spencer said, we, we spent some time on this one caveat, like we said, no maps in there yet, just, once we finalize kind of the, the roads and the years and all that, just didn't have time to get it together, but it'll be done here probably yet this week. So we'll provide that when that's available for something that's a little bit easier to digest. You look through here, ton of numbers, just a lot of detail into it. So I'm just going to kind of highlight some of the important stuff. Twenty twenty five on your detailed summary sheet, those are true dollars. You know, we're taking project costs and, and working them out to what we're actually paying. So these should be giving you a pretty good idea. The one exception is the inert landfill expansion. Like Cory said, we've been talking with landlords, whether that's in twenty five, twenty six, we do have some stuff highlighted for that. I could go through and we could walk through every project, but there's a lot there, a lot to digest. So one thing, just a few notes is, I'd like to highlight just kind of how much we spend on infrastructure projects and how much we try to get, you know, federal grant dollars, state grant dollars to help with that. You'll see a lot of it here is in our urban road program, where the state and the feds are contributing eighty percent for a lot of it. We just recently redid our urban roads in town, so there's a few added to it, so we're kind of trying to reprogram ourselves a little bit to make sure we're utilizing those and staying, you know, up to date with them because we get, you know, a certain amount each year. And we've added a lot of local roads to it that didn't have in the past. So we're trying to make sure when we do these roads, we're not jumping around and grabbing here and here and here. We want to try to, you know, program it so it's, and we're getting pockets up when they need to get done. So you can go through each, each year, there's lots, a lot there to be taken in. For this year, twenty twenty five, we include all of our stuff that we're currently doing. Twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, pretty well planned out, pretty detailed. The big ones there, we've got a couple million overlay jobs, and one's going to be highway two frontage roads, we'll be really doing all those. And then twenty twenty seven, we've got some federally jobs to be done, the big one being downtown roadways, current concrete driving lanes. If you look at them now, they're in not the greatest shape. To do a full concrete rehab project, we're talking millions, billions of dollars. So we're going to do a little milling overlay for the driving lanes and try to get us to, you know, a, a later date where we can do the full project with the parking lanes, do it right. Those are all laid out in twenty, I believe twenty twenty eight, we've got inert landfill construction kind of laid out. Like Cory said, five years, somewhere around there, we're going to go through the process, make sure we've got what we need and we do it right. We've got some land that we'd like to make work, but it's a, it's processed with landfills. It gets to be.
Can prairie dog money work for landfills?
We would, we would try and ship some of those prairie dog eligible projects up there and then use the city sales tax type of stuff for the landfill. We do have a landfill reserve and it's just like three hundred and eighty thousand or something in that, that we can use for like original purchase, but as far as the big sighting of it, that'll be a big to our expense. But we, again, we reflect in the funding plan that we expect that expense to come, that we have, we're planning to pay for.
Yeah, if you go to the back of it, there's a funding page that kind of breaks down where all of the revenue is going to come from, where we're going to pay for a lot of these, that's more on Spencer's end where he tells us how much to spend and we spend it. We're pretty good at that. One thing we started to add a little bit more, we've, we've had a miscellaneous kind of construction package for a long time. I don't, I don't know if it's in the package you guys have yet because we've kind of finalized it. There's a few things added there. Where we're starting to get caught up on our local roads a little bit, so we're trying to get, you know, whether it's a sanitary sewer lift or a storm lift or, you know, something like that where we're, we're tackling those projects that's probably been neglected for too long. We're slowly adding those in there, but we wanted to be a little, little cautious with, with some of the spending right now, just to make sure we're comfortable with it. So one of the items I think we added is some safety improvements for the main lift. We got some stuff in there, so. When it's all said and done, we'll have our roadway improvement map that shows every road we've touched in town. We're in a pretty good spot, waterman, we've got one listed here in twenty twenty nine, I believe. We're in a good spot with that, so just kind of prioritizing where we go next and getting our local roads in a program that fits it. But we'll have those maps updated, so it's a little bit more, you know, those ones look nice and pretty and are easy to explain where we're going and what we're doing. These numbers probably don't mean a lot. The one note I have, when you go to the detail, when I first started doing this, I think we've been doing it for four years now, five years capital improvement, we were right around a hundred bucks a foot for milling overlay jobs. We've been programming at like a hundred and twenty bucks a foot. The last two, the last ones we've done have been about a hundred and six, so the prices have gone down a little bit for the metal overlay. The waterman jobs though are the opposite, so just getting materials and, and stuff like that have gotten to be almost double on some of that stuff. So we're trying to attack what we can if, if the money's there, but one thing with that waterman is we've been, we've been trying to get state water commission funding to help us out because that makes that job so much easier for us and we can get six percent paid. So we're applying for stuff when we needed, we've got some items in here we'd like to do, but, you know, industrial parks, one of them, it's a big one. We apply for the flex funding every year, try to get something on there to kind of help all of that. So we've got a wish list, but we, we stick to what we can afford, so. And then the, the very last page is kind of the funding and where everything's going over the next five years, and I'll let Spencer talk about it once you guys have any questions from here.
Any questions for Devin?
Lot of numbers.
Lot of numbers, a lot of big numbers.
I think what the mayor gets paid.
Yeah, you know that, we keep that hidden.
You know, I, I appreciate the work that Devin does for the city, does for the capital improvement planning, and especially he's, his work in spreadsheets is, you know, I'm a simpleton, I can do a spreadsheet and I can make the work and the number is going to be right. He really does, takes it above and beyond and makes it much more readable and, and makes it interactive, so you change one number, it, it updates five different sheets and does everything for us like that. I don't know, Spencer, if you're going to bring some draw attention to it or not, but one of the things that we really have to talk about within the capital improvement plan, these are the roadways that we have to get to, these are the water mains that we have to get to, these are the priority infrastructure items that we have to get to, right? If we don't, it's going to cost us a lot more on the maintenance end where we're going to have to do a lot more pothole patching, we have to do a lot more frac seal, we have to do those sorts of things. And so we identified them. And then there's an additional list, the miscellaneous list, that's been there for a long time. Eventually, we have to prioritize that miscellaneous list. I mean, there's some things out there, you know, I'm a, I'm a fan, just because it's old doesn't mean that it's bad, right? Just because some, you have an old water main, if the old water main isn't breaking, doesn't mean it's a bad water main. Just because it's an old pump, if that old pump hasn't given you any issues and it's functioning accordingly and it's not vibrating, it's not doing those things, you don't need to replace it. But those are some things that we have to look at because we have some old pumps and some lift stations, we have some old infrastructure out there, and then we have other things. We have the law enforcement center that we have to talk about. So, you know, I'll let you take it from there, but we'll have to do a priority on all those other things, the miscellaneous items and those additional wants and needs, I think within your capital improvement plan are the things that we know we have to do, so.
And really, you know, Mayor Moll, Commissioner Hafferty walked through this in our capital improvement plan meeting before we came here and presented. Really on the prairie dog stuff of it, you know, we're trying to use prairie dog money as much as we can and show the state that we want this money, we will keep using it as much as we possibly can. And then on the infrastructure side of things, things, twenty thirty three is our infrastructure fund, five zero zero five is what we bring in special assessments on those projects that we don't bond so that, that revenue that we get, that people are paying on their once every fifteen year payment. And you can see the breakdown over there. You see the, on the general infrastructure down there towards the bottom of the page, second to last line, inert landfill expansion, that's in there, twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. So we have, we're, we're planning and expecting to, to remit that funding at that time. If sooner will it out. Second page, you'll see the airport infrastructure, what our local matches are and projected as to what we discussed at the last meeting. About the airport's interest earnings and, and us contributing to the airport infrastructure projects, the water source replacement fund reflects the new fee that we're proposing for twenty twenty six, and the local share of the south side waterman project, and then public building reserve fund for twenty twenty six, you know, and maybe even twenty twenty five, but I think we feel strongly that, you know, we talked about the, we had the sales tax referendum, we know how that went. It doesn't change the fact that we have a completely eighty eight non-compliant city hall here. We have security issues, we know what the city commission is, we have funnel, we have put that five hundred thousand dollars cash on hand there, that we need to make some, at least incremental adjustments to the front half of city hall, we'll say to the municipal court spot at, at a minimum. If you guys feel the same way, obviously, if you don't, now would be the time to say so, but we're, we're earmarking some improvements to the audio visual here in the commission chambers, as well as work up front and, and the back, which we could start as soon as you guys get it.
And those blinds.
And those blinds. And those blinds.
Well, and then we also have the discussion regarding the potential move with the police department of the downtown area. I mean, see if that's a viable option.
So that, that was one of the things that we do need to broach with the commission. So if you look at the general infrastructure projects piece of it, you look at the bottom half of it, there is some capacity out there once you get out to, you know, twenty twenty seven, eight, nine, twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty. And, you know, things can be shifted around in the near term, but we do have some bonds that are coming up. And then here's the thing, right? It's all about, there's an opportunity cost every dollar you spend. So if the commission says, hey, no, we're going to keep the PD with the LAC, go with that project, we're going to come in the twenty twenty seven, the twenty twenty seven capital improvement plan, I guarantee you is going to have all, you know, infrastructure money spent, right? We'll, we'll work on the stuff outside of our buildings, okay? But there is a real conversation that the city needs to have. We can move things around, the sales tax, probably get done, a relocation of the PD if you guys ask for it, we'll work up a plan, okay? But there's long-term costs, right? You know, you guys were here with the LAC budget, the sixty two thousand dollars in rent plus the twenty thousand in the IT salaries. You're probably, that's, there's eighty grand, you're probably in for twenty thousand operational, so there's, you know, sixty thousand dollars of savings just on the operational costs on the general fund side of things. The initial capital investment, we've talked about, you know, location of the new LAC, what the city's price of it being in there, right? Indications where it was around ten million. So if you take the PD out of that project, you save the ten million, you could probably spend three to relocate it. So you're talking about overall cost of the community. And so really need an indication from the city commission if you want staff to work on a plan that includes, a capital improvement plan that includes a relocation of the police department. Because if you prove it as is, we're going to come in twenty twenty seven, and, you know, there's going to be some hard infrastructure improvements with this, with this revenue. Again, we can't take this money and shove it into the general fund even if we want to, right? Via our ordinances without going to voters for a change. And so really looking for the commission's guidance on what you want to see moving forward. Not that you have to make a concrete decision, but do you want us to work up a plan?
I, I propose that you, at least that's like a plan. I mean, it's not, it's foolish enough to think that, you know, we'd be, we'd be remiss to not at least look. So I think a proposed plan would be worth looking at, my, my, my opinion.
I feel the same way after working in that building for whatever, twenty three years. We're a tenant there, we've outgrown it, and we need to do something different.
Look at you, you're thirty, you're thirty six now, look at your hair.
Well, I guess.
I want, and I think it's, I think it's important to say specifically, we are not abandoning the joint powers agreement at all.
No.
We are not turning, right? We have, we have worked with.
We're invested in our own operation.
Yes. And so there's, there's real, there's real dollars and real decisions to be made, and I get it's a sensitive subject, right? But there's hundreds of thousands of dollars and millions of dollars.
Well, I think it became sensitive because they thought we were leaving the JPA, right?
There was, there was confusion of that. Yeah, that's part of it.
Yeah. I mean, I always looked at it as, we're paying rent there, we've outgrown it.
Yeah.
Where we're at, they can't expand for us unless they go to the, the new jail, but we don't know when that's going to happen. So I think we got to take care of business.
No. To do this, you know, we have to talk to some people too, is how do we proceed with that? I mean, we don't even know what's available or if it is available or other ideas. Are we, is that something we want to discuss to find out what the?
I mean, we, I can. Yeah, I, I think that, Mayor, let me report back just on, you know, we've toured a couple buildings, right? We can call back and gauge seriousness and report back to you for conversation in the future. So.
That's doable.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, and I think it's important to get ahead, so as part of the sales tax proposal, the PD relocation was included as part of the stay. And so we go forward with the plan, people are like, well, they didn't even lay up. It's all about opportunity cost. So the dollars that we would use to, for the relocation is just money that we can't use for the hard infrastructure outside the city, the streets, water, sewer, stormwater. We have a capital improvement here that meets our needs right here, okay? But I, I tell you, we go back to the engineering department, they, they'll give us projects that, that can and need to be done, right? Again, it's all about opportunity cost, and the idea was that if you use the sales tax money from a referendum for it, you don't have to take that opportunity cost. That was, that was the piece of it. So I just want, I think that needs to be clearly stated.
And I think that the modeling within this, this building is a necessity.
Well, we've been told that by many people that have sat back where you are, you can't hear. We, you know, we know that, we got to fix that. And we've just seen that, Jeff with wheelchair, he can't get in on his own. Those are issues. Security, we had issues there before, so. I, I do think it's the right way to proceed. Do we, we don't need to vote on that, do we?
No, I, I think I have general consensus that you guys want. If I may, Mayor, I don't know if you guys are for the comment, I just want to thank[1794.11] If I may, Mayor, I don't know if you guys are for the comment, I just wanted to thank the team over here. I think I told you guys before the meeting, you think about, we do, we work our butt off here at city hall, we try to respond to the public good and reflect well upon the city, and the team in the auditing department, engineering department assessing, they bring a great attitude, we love it. The people things care about day to day, right, is the street being clogged when it snows, does the water come out of the faucet, is garbage reliably picked up? Do the police show up when it, that all happens outside this building, and it takes real people doing real work on a day-to-day thing that often gets overlooked, and these are the three people leading the charge out there for us. A big, a, three of the, you know, six or seven people leading the charge out there for us, so really thank them for their service to the city.
Thank you.
Go back to discussing what is happening.
Over.
Once we adjourn.
Well, is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, that means it's a trip.